And good evening, welcome to a W A T D political forum. Tonight's race is for the Plymouth Select Board. Charlie Blitzer, Ed Bradley, Alan Costello, and John Mahoney are here in studio all running for two seats, and they'll let the voters know where they stand on the issues. Thanks for joining us tonight, gentlemen.
Thank you for having us.
Okay, I'm Christine James, your moderator. Charles Mathewson is here, asking questions with me, and Monday Night Talk host Kevin Tocchi, and of course, thanks to our media partner, our friends over at PAC TV, providing video coverage. Our format is simple, we've asked candidates to have opening and closing statements. Opening statements no longer than two minutes, please. Closing statements, one minute. Now, we're tough about this, too. We've got our own Lenny Rowe over there, he's timing you. Green means go, yellow means 10 seconds, not step on it, and red means stop. So, we are pretty tough about that, and we let people know, if you go over, you get a five finger count grace period. If you're still talking, you get the bell. We never make it through a night without using this, and if you're still talking, we cut your mic. So, we try to stick to a really tough schedule. We also have the best part of this, which is the lightning round. Those are the questions where the answers are either yes or no, or one or two sentences. That's after our reporters ask you a regular round of questions, those answers are a minute, and we will keep letting you know what kind of answer we want, whether it's a yes or no, two sentences, or the longer part that we do first. Now, we chose the opening and closing order out of the stand-in W A T D newsroom koozie, the old one, we still haven't found disappeared at the end of last election season, and we have our order, and it's going to be Alan Costello, John Mahoney, Ed Bradley, and Charlie Blitzer. Then we reverse that order at the end. Any questions, gentlemen?
No.
Nope? Okay, so let's get started. Let's start with our opening statement, let's go with Alan Costello. Good evening.
Good evening. I'd like to thank W A T D and PAC TV for inviting me to this forum this evening. My name is Alan Costello, and I'm running for one of the two Select Board seats in Plymouth on May 21st. I'm a longtime resident of Plymouth, being a full-time since 1980. I live in the West Plymouth section, town with my wife Carol. We raised four children there. We now have a grandchild, and Plymouth has been very good to me, I enjoy, I enjoy the town immensely. In 2014, I became a town meeting member, representing Precinct 10. 2015, I was elected chairman of Precinct 10, and moved down to the Committee of Precinct Chairs, where in 2018 to 2020, I was the chairman of the Committee of Precinct Chairs. Also ran a business out of Plymouth, a telecommunications tower and antenna business since 1990. It's been very good, I still do it, I'm at the tail end of our time, I still work, but I now work for the enjoyment part of it. And it's given me, it's given me time to get involved with town politics at a little bit bigger pace, and I felt that this was a time when I could reach out, get a town-wide office, and help the town. I decided the 11th hour to join this particular race, when Mr. Flaherty announced in February that he was not going to run for reelection. There were two spots available, and at the time, only two candidates. So, I put my name in the hat for a couple of reasons. One was to give the taxpayer and the resident some options. The second reason, most important, was to bring balance and confidence back to the board. So, thank you very much, and I look forward for your support, thank you.
Thank you very much, that was Alan Costello with your opening comment or statement. Let's go now to John Mahoney, opening statement.
Christine, thank you, and to A T D for holding this forum. So, my name is John Mahoney. I've been a Plymouth resident for 25 years, and I have over 50 years combined on the South Shore between two communities. And I first got involved, almost 20 years ago, as a town meeting member. When I first moved to the community, I got heavily involved in Babe Ruth baseball, I co-coached a team with a friend of mine, I was vice president of Plymouth Babe Ruth baseball for a couple of years, and then after that, entered into politics with respect to town meeting, appointed to FinCom for a year or two, and then I was fortunate enough to get elected four times to the Plymouth Select Board. I've put two children through Cold Spring Elementary, one was a 2006 graduate of Plymouth North High School, and has graduated from Cornell, and I currently have a son, who's a sophomore at North High School, and Christine, I know you're not going to believe this, but I have a nine-month-old daughter at home. So, when the forum's over, I'll show you some photos on the phone, okay? So, I decided to get back into this, obviously, you know, the current board, I believe that there's been some unforced errors, to use tennis parlance, and I thought that my experience would certainly add some value to the board. I like to dial into the numbers, and certainly not afraid to go against the grain, and then, you know, to piggybacking on what Mr. Costello was talking about, you know, at almost the 11th hour, there was nobody challenging. You had one incumbent had walked away, and you had two people running for the two seats, and I had never lived in a community in over 50 years where the executive board had never been challenged in the spring, and I found that unacceptable. I was perplexed that nobody else wanted to step up, so here I am. By trade, I am a local four elevator mechanic, obviously, when we talk about some of the issues facing the community, we talk about, you know, residential development and growth, I installed an elevator into a three-story apartment building in Red Brook over the course of the last month, and, you know, never, I never could have imagined that would have happened, but here we are.
Okay, that was John Mahoney, her opening statement. Now, we're going to go to Ed Bradley. Good evening.
Good evening, thank you. I want to thank W A T D and PAC TV for covering this, it's very important that business owners and citizens understand the candidates' viewpoints. I'm Ed Bradley, on the ballot, I appear as G Edward Bradley, I'll be the last name in the Select Board column, so start from the bottom and work your way up. I've lived in Plymouth since 1959, and my parents moved here year-round. I grew up in Priscilla Beach, attended Plymouth Public Schools, going to Manman Elementary School, Nathaniel Morton School, and Plymouth Carver Regional High School, where I graduated in 1973. In October of 74, I was appointed to the Plymouth Fire Department as a paid-on call firefighter, assigned to the Manman Station. This became a full-time appointment in January of 77. Over the years, I've been assigned to the Manman Station, the West Plymouth Station, the North Plymouth Station, and the Headquarters Station. 2007, I was appointed chief of the department, and I retired from that position April 12th of this year, on my 67th birthday, after 47 and a half years of service. The residents become more familiar with the candidates after following these forums. I'll answer all these questions truthfully and completely as possible, so the residents have a better idea of my viewpoint. However, I want the voters to know that if elected, I represent the citizens of Plymouth, and I will promote, support, and vote in accordance with your wishes. I will be your voice in town government. Plymouth needs to attract the right type of businesses to town to build on the commercial tax base, and we need to show prospective business owners, as well as the existing business owners, that we will work to expedite their building and expansion approvals. We've had a bad reputation of not being business-friendly, with so multiple committees and boards, and at which time, some of those authorities overlap, it kind of slows the process. And of course, for a business owner, time is money, and we need to fix that problem.
Thank you very much, that was Ed Bradley with your opening statement. Now, let's go to Charlie Blitzer.
Yes, thank you. I'd first like to thank W A T D for hosting this forum, PAC TV for covering it live. I'd like to thank, I thank Christine, Charles, and Kevin for their questions, I'm just kidding about that, but I'd like to thank you for that. I'd like to also thank my fellow candidates for being here tonight at this forum. My name is Charlie Blitzer, and I'm running for reelection because I love Plymouth. I'm not a politician, I am a member of our great community, just like all of you. I'm dedicated to serving the residents of our town, and want to be a voice for the people. I am always willing to listen, and my goal as a Select Board member is to get things done. On May 21st, I asked that the people of Plymouth allow me the privilege of representing them to have the conversations needed to make the difficult decisions on issues facing our town. Thank you.
That was an opening statement with Charlie Blitzer. Now, we're going to go to questions, and remember, this is the candidates for the Plymouth Select Board. We're going to start with Kevin Tocchi. Questions for the candidates?
Thank you, Christine. One of the four non-binding ballot questions deals with a controversial parcel of land in town that's called the County Woodlot. Where do you stand on the idea of the county placing a thoroughbred horse racing track on that property?
Who'd you like to start with?
We'll start with Mr. Bradley.
I'm against it. That parcel of land, where it's located, the traffic's going to be an issue, and I don't believe that horse racing or gambling and the associated, and to go along with it, belong in the town of Plymouth, that's not our character.
So, my follow-up question, too, is if building a racetrack isn't plausible, would it be in the town's best interest, the Select Board and the County Commissioners, to work together to find the best way to develop that land?
Yes, and that's always going to be the best way out. Unfortunately, the County Commissioners, the town of Plymouth, have been, we've been at war for 200 years, and we don't get along with each other, and it's been difficult to try to get them to work together on parcels of land like this.
I'm with Mr. Costello.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I too, as the project has been explained and brought forth, I'd be against the project. It's not the right location in town, it's not the right time, it's not the right type of project for the fabric of Plymouth. I know we're at the early stages, and as a resident on that non-binding question, I would vote no on Saturday, but as an acting selectman, if I'm fortunate enough to become a select person, you know, you'd have to take the results of that non-binding question and go with what the resident and the people want. I have a sense that it's going to be no. I don't think it brings a lot to the town, I think the county is overreaching to put that type of facility, horse racing. I love the idea of a resort-style hotel, restaurants, minor-league baseball field, but I think a thoroughbred racetrack and all that it brings with it is not the right project for that section of town. Thank you.
Mr. Mahoney, same question.
Kevin, so, when we, when we watched Tom Brady for 20 years, quarterback in New England Patriots, they talked about when he dropped back for a pass, it was progressions, there was reads he had to make. The first receiver wasn't open, he went to the second one, and the second one wasn't open, and it went to the third one, okay? So, the first thing I'm looking at with respect to this parcel is, who should the owner be? The owner should be the town of Plymouth. This should have happened a long time ago, we should be self-determining here about what we want to see happen to that parcel. Second, what's the next question? Should county government, Plymouth County Government even exist anymore? Okay? That's an hour-long discussion in itself. And then the third question is, then you get to this proposal? Absolutely not. It doesn't add any value to the community, all it does is going to damage the quality of life and the property values of people probably in a half-mile to at least a couple-mile radius around that property, okay? And then the other thing is, your second question, you don't have to develop this parcel, there's no rule that says you have to do that.
So, this is the second part, would you have 30 seconds for the second part? Okay.
So, you're making the assumption that it has to be developed to add value to the town or the county. It doesn't have to be, that's not the case at all, okay? The single best thing that might happen to this parcel is, is left its open space, and certainly, those individuals down in the Tall Pines neighborhood, and who have residential homes down off of Long Pond Road, they would be grateful for that, and their property values would go up, and their quality of life would also go up, too, okay? If that land was set aside in perpetuity, and it's a way of getting that done.
Okay, thanks. Let's go to Charlie Blitzer now, same question.
I think that's my answer right there, I'm not for horse racing, and I've actually never seen a proposal before our board about horse racing. So, we, I supported a letter to let them do their due diligence, to see what they could, can, and can't do on that parcel of land, and if they came back to us with a proposal that the residents would support, I would be able to support that, but I haven't seen that yet. And the, I'm not in support of any, anything on that parcel of land until the infrastructure at exit five is fixed. I don't, no, no proposals at all are mine supportive, because they can't handle, the neighborhoods can't handle the congestion there. The traffic, I stood out there for two hours on Saturday doing a standout, and I did it two Saturdays in a row for a reason. I got to really see firsthand how the congestion, I saw multiple, almost accidents, and this is before that 40B project is opened up, so.
Thank you. Did you have another follow-up question to that? No?
Do you think I answered both on that?
Yeah, and I think it's Costello did as well, so that's why.
Okay, okay. Charles Mathewson, question for the candidates?
The other hot item is the 25 acres in Chiltonville that Holtek owns still, that has, they have an agreement to sell to residential developer, and Town Meeting, June 21st, will be faced with a question to buy it for an emergency services facility, or allow residential development. Not a happy question to be faced with. Let's start with Charlie.
So, you're talking about 46 Sandwich Road?
Yes.
The 26 acres. Yes, we went into an agreement with, that the land gets sold to Mr. Vail unbeknownst to the town. It's something that the board, it was one of our goals to purchase that land, so we could control the use of that land. And when I say that, we can, hopefully, one of the plans, and the chief will tell you, and the police chief will tell you, it's the perfect spot to put a public safety building in. So, that's one of the plans, all of the, we wouldn't do anything without the residential support. And when it got announced that land was sold and was going to be a residential development, I have never got more phone calls from constituents than I had on that property. And they're all, everybody I talked to, they don't want any residential development there, they'd like to see a public safety building there. So, yeah, we did pay a million-plus more than what the developer paid, but the developer didn't have to deal with the town, he could have kept it and do his project, but he worked with the town, and we all agreed that there was, well, we haven't agreed yet, but that, so we want to purchase that land.
Remember, too, if you feel like you didn't get enough time to completely answer every question, you can always put that in your closing statement, too.
So, as a follow-up?
Okay.
You just mentioned the traffic problems on Long Pond Road.
Right.
What about the traffic problems on Sandwich Road?
Okay, part of the plan would be after making the road accessible out to the M Road, and there's work to be done, there's infrastructure to be done, but in the meantime, by controlling that land, we can control what goes in there, and that's very important, whether it's open space, or whether it's a public safety building.
But Town Meeting is faced with one question, not two, to buy it for public safety.
Public safety.
Not for open space, or for any other reason, or just to control it, but for public safety.
And the chief could probably elaborate, and he probably will, when you ask him, it's the perfect spot for that land, for that, that land is the perfect spot. They've done studies, and we're going to hear about it tomorrow night at our meeting tonight, and after tomorrow night, I think people will be convinced. Now, this is a serious, because it's non-negotiable, when the price gets set. If Town Meeting thinks they can negotiate with the developer, I don't believe it's going to happen, he may walk away, and there's going to be, there's going to be residential development. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ed, same question. I know that there's been two studies done, the most recent one in last year, was completed last year, and shows that that's a great location. How do you fit it there with the, well, first of all, how do you feel about that parcel?
I think that it should be purchased by the town. We did do a response time study, we did that ahead of time before we did any of the renovations, or asked for any money in the renovations, and any of the substations, the fire stations. We wanted to make sure the stations we had were in the correct locations before we spent millions of dollars rebuilding them. We always knew that Central Station was not in the right location, it's set up against the water, so you don't have a full 360-degree response zone, you only have 180, and there's 2 miles, 2.3 miles north to the North Plymouth Station, 2.3 miles west to the West Plymouth Station, but you had over six miles south to the Manman and Pine Hill Station. And when the, it was almost two years ago now, when the consultant did that response time study, looking at today's workload as well as into the future, he dropped a pin without regard to any parcel of land or roadwork in town, it landed on Sandwich Road in Bramhall's Lane, which obviously, there wasn't any land there, so it ends up being in the correct location. That was before this lot was ever talked about being bought or purchased.
What do you do about that interchange? By the way, it was designed in 1949, before people really knew how to design an interchange. I live in that neighborhood, I never use it, because it's too dangerous for a car. So, what about a fire truck?
Well, they have already had some talks with Mass DOT, because that land does abut the M Road property, and the talks are about what would it take to get an emergency access road into that property for the use of emergency vehicles going in and out. So, they had Sandwich Road, Old Sandwich Road, they could add the M Road to go either north onto the highway, or south and get down to 3A and head north or south in that location.
Alan Costello, as a Town Meeting representative, how do you feel about the choice that you'll be faced with?
Well, hopefully, Charlie, I'm a Select Board member at that time, and I won't have to vote on it, but to your question, I think this is an example, this is the second example with this present Select Board, that has jumped into an issue, and we don't have all the information, there's a host of questions about this thing. Number one, there was talk of a $7 million negotiation with Holtek, that fell through. All of a sudden, you hear on the street that a developer has purchased for $2.3 million, that's a huge disconnect for me as a business owner, I don't know where that other money went. And then, this developer's willing to sell it back to the town for a cool million and a half, without even really touching the property. I'm going to have to have a lot of questions answered before I vote on it. I question both of the other candidates. I have not seen the studies, but as a Town Meeting member, I approve them, but how can you put a station where you can't go south? Very difficult to go south, and as far as a downtown station, you can't be any further from downtown. Thank you.
John Mahoney.
So, I'm the chair of Endicap, the state decommissioning panel for the power plant, and this is, now, this is a textbook example of an unforced error, and I know, not blaming Charlie here, he was helicoptered in in the middle of August, and he came into the middle of the fray, but the origins of the problem are, is that your current Select Board, in the majority, staked out a position of asking for 28 million over six years in property tax revenue from an entity that stopped making electricity in Memorial Day weekend of 19. Holtek said, "We want to pay seven." The professionals that were advising the board said, "Over six years, you could probably ask for 10 to 11." The Select Board dug their heels in at 28. Positive disposition of two parcels of land were on the table, Chiltonville at a reduced price or a gift, and a right of first refusal for the 1,500 acres. Those were eventually taken off the table, because the board wouldn't move off of the 28 million. So, when you hear about $7 million offer for Chiltonville, that was, that was correct, because the board wouldn't move off the 28 million. Holtek got frustrated, and they eventually moved on.
Thank you.
Are you saying the town could have gotten that for free?
I'm saying it's distinctly possible that if another, so the board was negotiating with no leverage in this situation, against an entity, a billion-dollar international concern that wrote the book on hardball, okay? So, they went into it, it cost them this parcel of land either as a gift, or at a significantly reduced cost. And the other thing that's not made out to the public here is that we've taxed them so far this year, $3.2 million, which equates to a $200 million assessment, they've appealed that, they've stopped paying, they're going to go into the process saying that we're only worth 125. They're probably going to win, which means that we have to reimburse them 1.2 million dollars.
Do you have any more follow-up for this whole issue?
Yeah, Charlie, can you respond to John?
About getting my land for nothing?
Or for less than 3.75 million.
As far as, and I did some research after the legal woman voters, when John made that statement, and I talked to the former town manager, Melissa, I had a long conversation with her, I talked to the current town manager, I talked to the current board. Apparently, a year before, the, that board was negotiating, and that's where Melissa told me that it was 7.5 million, it was the board before this board, and she was told not that they weren't negotiating properly. I need, I need a little more time on this.
Do you want to give another 30 seconds?
I guess, I'll sum it up.
Okay, 30 seconds.
At no time did anybody ever, I know Betty Caracca wanted it for nothing, she said, "That's what I was trying to get it, get them to gift it," but at no time did anybody ever hear a statement by anybody from Holtek, or anybody from the board, or Mr. Mahoney, that we could get it gifted, and we could get it for nothing. That statement was never made. So, and I'll tell you, the town manager, the current town manager was, he talked to legal, too, to see if the lawyers had heard anything, too, and nobody ever heard that. So, that's as much as I know, because I'm new on the board.
Do you want to ask follow-ups, too, to the other members here? Anything else?
Anyone else have something to say about this?
John.
30 seconds.
So, what happens is, I have dozens of conversations over the course of the year with Holtek managers, setting an agenda for Endicap, and we always come around to the negotiations, so it was made crystal clear to me that if they had softened their stance with respect to the 28 million, the possibility was there distinctly, that it was either going to be gifted, or available at a significantly lower price. And I conveyed that to multiple current Select Board members, but none of them with the last name of Blitzer.
Okay, 30 seconds.
Yeah, I'd just like to finish up on the final section of that, is the two possibilities, a public safety building versus 55 housing, 32 units, I believe. I've gotten a lot of calls as well, Charlie, and it's actually split. Some people would just as soon have the, the over 55, and get the tax revenue. A lot of people are not really high on a public safety building in that area of town with the congestion and the noise, and the inaccessible ability to go south. Thank you.
Can I respond to that?
I just want to get Ed in here, under 30 seconds.
Yeah, as far as not being able to go south, that's absolutely a false statement. You know, they can head right up to the highway, and there's emergency crossover just north of the M Road, the connection from the North Pond Lane to the South Pond Lane, it's marked as that, because it's there for our use, and our trucks use things like that constantly. They can also go up into the exit five and swing right around, and with the OptiCom system, the traffic is not a problem for any of the fire apparatus, at any time.
Charlie, any more follow-ups to this issue?
I think Charlie had a call.
Okay, 30 seconds.
I can tell you, every call I got, and I know a lot of the people, every call I got was, it was against any kind of residential housing, okay? And I asked the question, what about a public safety, if that, if that was a proposal? Would much rather have that, okay? And a couple of facts for you is, residential development, we lose money on, okay? Even if it's 55 plus, I know you think they don't have kids in schools, but they cost us money with EMT service, police, fire, and Chief Bradley could respond to that, too. So, they cost, they cost us money.
Thank you. Did you want to go through any more Chiltonville?
No, I'm going home to Chiltonville, but this is also.
And just for folks that are just tuning in, you're listening to, you're listening to a W A T D political forum, the race is for a Select Board, we've got the four candidates here, Charlie Blitzer, Ed Bradley, Alan Costello, and John Mahoney. Now, I'm going to ask you gentlemen a question, this is a several-part question, and it, first part is, please explain to me what you understand happened to Melissa O'Reilly, and part two, and do you support the way it was done, what would you change? Let's start with you, Alan Costello.
Well, I'm not privy to exactly what happened, but I know her contract had a end date, and then there was, all of a sudden, last summer, there was a moving up of that end date, and then I think in the fall, it was even accelerated for, as a resident, it was difficult to watch, because, and as a business owner, it was difficult to watch. You have a high-paying position, and all of a sudden, they're paying her not to come into work. So, I think the way it was handled could not have been any more awkward, and any more expensive for the resident and the taxpayer. I didn't always agree with Ms. O'Reilly, I thought she did some good things, I think she did some poor things for the town, so I had no problem with her leaving at the end of her contract, but the way it was handled, I believe, was messy, and was, was bad for both parties.
And again, that was, you kind of answered both questions, but it was two-part, if you, what would you, what would you have changed about the scenario?
Well, if it was an employee of mine, and I know there's really not a lot of comparison between the private sector and the, and the public, but if she was in the contract, and under contract per her attorney and our attorney, I would, I would have had her run out the contract, and at the rate she was supposed to get, and that would be it. But to give her all kinds of incentive money, and extra money, and legal fees, no one has yet told anyone what the final price is, and I'm going to be very surprised if it's not exorbitant, and it really was not handled correctly. Thank you.
Let me ask you the third part of the question, so, so I have this straight, so now she's still special assistant to the town manager, there's a current town manager, and isn't there a plan in place for a hiring for an assistant town manager?
Well, I think there's an assistant town manager on board for the last couple of weeks. We have a full-time town manager that's been her replacement, but in the interim, we had an interim town manager. We still pay her the tune of $4,500 a week from now through the end of July. How would anyone else in this room like to collect $4,500 a week and be asked not to come into work?
885.
Well, whatever the number is, and also, there's a car allowance for $5,000, and you ask the employee not to come in, but yet you give her $5,000 for a car allowance. I think it was missed by the, by the board.
Okay, the estimates that we've heard, and again, I can't confirm this, are anywhere the cost of town, anywhere between $200,000 and $400,000 to go through this whole scenario. Are these the numbers you're hearing?
Not only am I hearing them, but I, I've done them a little bit in my head, and I would, I would agree with those numbers, I think they're going to be very close.
Okay, let's go now to John Mahoney. Let's go now to John Mahoney. Several-part question. First, to the best of your knowledge, what happened with Melissa Origi?
I think both sides sat down and had a mutually beneficial parting of the ways, where the board in August of last year voted to amend the contract and have her end date to be late July of '22. So she was going to give 11 months' notice, but walk out with a $115,000 lump sum payment, which was six months of the 12 months that she was walking away from. Okay? So, you know, difficult, but probably... That wasn't the worst thing in the world. But then, as you move through the next few months, and you got into November, and this is where, you know, the data or the information is missing, Christine, all of a sudden, it's go home from December 1 of '21 till late July of '22, $35,000 a month, don't show up at Town Hall. So that's 277. You prorated the director of planning, Mr. Hartman, to be the acting town manager for a few months. And Mr. Brindisi came on in mid-March. He's overlapped. And then I said this before, I don't know what you put. You hired a consultant to conduct a town manager search, but you ultimately didn't hire the candidate that came from that search.
Okay, so that was part one. Now, part two, are you pleased with the way it was done, and what would you have done the whole process?
I... First of all, I would have... The August amendment, I would have struggled with that because I'm paying her, or the individual, $115,000 not to work. Okay? But you have to tell me what occurred in the 90 days after the voted amendment in August of '21. What occurred that prompted the board to say, "We need you gone now," and it's 35 a month for eight months? So when you tally this up, you're in that 350 to 450 range, Christine.
Okay, that was my next question. My estimate, we had heard, between 200 and 400,000. Would you agree with that number? Think more...
It's $300,000 at least going away.
Okay. All right. Same question. Let's go to Charlie Blitzer. Your understanding with what happened with Melissa Origi?
Okay, first of all, let's clarify one thing. Melissa still works for the town of Plymouth, and she is working. Okay? I talked to her the other day for close to one hour. And Dickie Quintle's in contact with her at CHM, and she is working for the town of Plymouth. She's doing it at home. So let's clarify that. It just started before I was on the board. She came to the board and wanted to leave. It was time to go. And this is months and months before I even ran for election. And she negotiated and worked a deal out just before, I believe it was in August, when it was worked out. I didn't become a selectman until after it. But... So she made a deal. Legal counsel was involved the whole way. Later on, some things happened. And anybody who knows the private sector, when you've got a CEO, that he wants to leave, most times, they just pay him and tell him to leave because some problems can arise. And some problems arose. And it was handled in executive session, and we didn't tell people out of...
Sorry, we're going to have to cut you off there. Just remember, just a minute, but the second part of the question, with the way it was handled, do you agree with the way it was handled?
Yes.
And would you have changed anything?
The only thing I... I might have changed one thing, but 17 years she worked for the town of Plymouth. And out of respect for her and for her time, I wanted to make sure she get paid fairly, and she did. And by the way, the deal was structured by her and her lawyer, and we agreed to it. Maybe it would have been easier for all the people that have been knocking us since I've been on the board, that have been criticizing us, that maybe we should have just had a... Put her on leave of absence and had a full investigation of what the problems were. But we thought it'd be better off not to embarrass some people and not to have potential lawsuits.
Thank you. And would your estimate be that it cost the town between 200 and 400,000?
We brought in a new town manager, Derek Brindisi, who I'm going to tell you is already doing a great job. We brought him in early. Okay? So the transition period was longer than probably it should have been or could have been. But I don't regret that. And I think we're in good shape. And Lee Hartman did a great job. So we paid whatever Lee's bump was, and then we paid Derek early. And that's it. Melissa got them... She was due a six-month severance anyway. So she wasn't paid anything more than she deserves. All it cost us was the interim, whatever months...
Thank you. Sorry. I know it's tough. All right. Ed Bradley, same question. Your first part, to the best of your knowledge, what happened with Melissa Origi and the town of Plymouth?
Well, she had a long-term contract. It was longer than I had seen before. And she wanted to get out of the last year of the contract. She no longer wanted to work for the town. Now, to me, if I was a company owner and my CEO came to the board of directors and asked to leave their contract, we would probably have severed the employment immediately because they've already admitted that they don't want to hang around and that they're not as engaged as they were before. And unfortunately, in that period of time when she made that agreement and when she was finally given a different position, there were some problems that arose, and they had to be dealt with immediately, and the select board did do that.
Okay. Do you... Part two, do you agree with the way that it was handled?
I don't know anything about how the original contract was written in giving... Allowing her to have six months' severance pay when she wanted to walk away on her own. Usually, that happens if, you know, you can't come to an agreement. But I think that it could have been handled differently as far as the severance pay.
Okay. What would your estimate be? It cost the whole process, cost the town between 200 and 400,000?
I've heard that it's around $300,000, yes. But, you know, there are probably some other costs, like all the attorney fees, that I wouldn't be aware of.
Okay, thanks. Let's go down to Kevin Tachi. Questions for the candidates.
Feeling a jeopardy moment here. I want to finish the category of town managers for a thousand. Let's talk about Derek Brindisi. As a candidate, hopefully to be elected onto the board come this Saturday, what do you feel the charge should be, or his main focus should be, when it comes to Town Hall and the betterment of the community? We'll start with Chief Bradley.
I think he's already started that, working hand-in-hand with the select board and, you know, getting things to run a little bit smoother. And then he's going to start working with the different boards and committees in town, again, to get those a little bit more streamlined.
Well, again, give me some specifics here. What are some of the things that you feel that the town has been lacking? You've been in town for long enough, you know. What is the town that has been lacking that you feel, maybe, again, nothing against Ms. Origi, but always, there's going to be some kind of void. Someone's going to have strengths. Someone's going to have weaknesses. What are some of the things that you feel that Derek should be focusing on that maybe have been lax over the past few years?
I think, as I said in my opening statement, working with the different boards and committees to kind of streamline things for business owners to come into town. You know, there's a process that they have to go through before they even get to the building committee or... I mean, excuse me, the building department or the fire department to get their permits. And those usually aren't where they have the issues. They know what the building codes is. They know what the fire codes are. And they're going to build their building to meet that. It's all those committees, and some of the authority of those committees overlap each other, that they have to go through before they get there. And it just puts a bad taste in their mouth.
Mr. Blitzer, please. Same question.
Okay, the answer to that is Derek's doing exactly what we hired him to do. He came in, he hit the ground running, came, he started work early before he was full-time. He was using his personal time coming in and got really entrenched into the job. He was familiar with the lot was going on in town anyway, so that was very helpful. But what has he done? He got involved in negotiations with the unions. We didn't have one arbitration, one grievance. Everything was done swiftly, and we got the job done. We got our employees paid fairly. That was the first thing he did. And that helped with the morale. There's a real morale problem at Town Hall, and he's worked to change that. He's got the department heads working to make it more customer-friendly, as Eddie said, streamlining the permits. If somebody comes in with a project, they're going to sit in a room with all the department heads, and they're going to make it helpful for them to get things done. So economic development, he's going to work... I've already seen him working with the Economic Development Corporation. And the last thing is, he's got 53 positions to fill.
But is this what the collective board's charge is? Or is this what you feel?
Yes. This is what I... We needed to have somebody come in and change the culture at Town Hall. And that's what Derek has already started to do. If you talk to the employees there, it's a whole new... And I'm not blaming Melissa or anybody else. It's just Derek has just come in. He's building a team, and he's changing the culture at Town Hall, the way they do business. And that was very important to the board. It's very important to me. He's hiring people now. We're getting more applications because of these new contracts than they've ever had before, and he's able to hire quality people.
Mr. Mahoney, same question. Derek Brindisi.
So I was on the board when Derek was the assistant town manager, and I believe that was from 2015 to 2017. So Kevin, you have to remember that the select board is a policy-direction board. So whenever the board votes in the majority, it's Mr. Brindisi's job to go out and then, you know, ensure that that happens. So, you know, obviously, we're going back to the prior question here. Was it time for a change? Probably. You know, Mr. Brindisi comes in, he's a new face. I think he needs some time to get acclimated, obviously. You know, he was running his own show up in Upton, only a $27, $30 million budget, but he's back. He's back in the big leagues. And, you know, he's a talented, you know, personal individual. And, you know, I'm sure, you know, that, you know, he's bringing a lot of energy to the position, and, you know, he's got to be in it for the long run. He's got to be in it for the long run. So at the end of the day, especially when we talk about union negotiations, the town manager is not an impediment if three, four, or five members of the select board are voting in the affirmative on a certain figure.
Thank you.
But is that your direction for him, your charge for him, and that is his negotiations? Or are there other areas that...
This is the CEO of the business. It's almost a $300 million business.
Correct.
Okay? You're the executive board. You've hired the CEO to run the day-to-day operations of this business. Okay? So I only got involved on a daily basis when I had to. I wasn't there, you know. I go out, you know, I work in construction 40 hours a week. I'm doing my job. Occasionally, I get a day off. You know, I might show up at Town Hall and do something. So for the most part, you're communicating with department heads. You're ensuring that things are going smoothly at Town Hall. And of course, yes, you know, I can say, I agree with Mr. Blitzer, there were some morale issues, but...
Thank you.
All right, Christine.
Same question, Mr. Costello.
Yeah, I haven't had the opportunity to meet with Mr. Brindisi yet on his new stint here as town manager. I did have a few encounters and meetings with him when he was here as assistant town manager back in '15 and '17. I think at that time, I'm going to give him the benefit that he was handcuffed by his boss. But I think that's his first charge, is to change the management style from the previous town manager. And I think from the word on the street, he's doing that. So I give him a lot of credit, and I wish him a lot of luck. I think the climate with the town employees, the morale was down. The previous town manager had a very difficult management style. I think Mr. Brindisi is correcting that, and there's some signs that there's already paying dividends. So I'm going to wish him luck and give him, if I'm lucky enough to get on the board, have a good working relationship with him this time around, and hopefully move forward for the town of Plymouth.
Charles Matheson, questions for the candidates here?
I feel like my colleague Kevin here, I want to ask about a dozen more questions on each of the topics that we've discussed. But time is fleeting. As you guys know, I'm running for town meeting representative. And that means, if I'm successful like Saturday, my swan song for Plymouth politics. I've dealt with each of you individually for many years, and I have a lot of respect for all four of you. So now, I'm going to raise a difficult question that is not public, and that is the East Bay Club and the East Bay Plan. There's word out on the street that some of you have gathered at East Bay Grill and have talked about the future of Plymouth politics, and that the plan has involved electing Dick Quintle, and then electing Dick as chairman, then electing Charlie, then electing Ed. I don't know if that's true, because I haven't been privy to this, but it's talked about. So I want to bring it out from under the peach basket. We'll start with you, Charlie. Is there an East Bay Grill and an East Bay Plan?
I have no idea what you're talking about. When did this happen?
Well, supposedly, over the last few years, before you were...
Well, let me just... Let me stop you right there. Paul Barbado owns East Bay Grill. He's not a political guy.
Yeah.
Okay? I've been working for him for 22, 23 years. He supports me. I haven't been there in months. I have not worked there in probably six months. But Paul's a longtime friend and longtime supporter. As far as East Bay having a political pact, it's absolutely...
I'm not talking about the business, Charlie.
No, this is... Let me tell you something. This is the most ludicrous thing in this campaign that I've heard. Okay? It really is. I'm embarrassed that you just asked that question because it's laughable, Charles. I don't know what you're talking about. So...
Ed Bradley.
You know, I haven't been to the East Bay, I think, more than a year and a half. Anytime I did go, I was always with my wife to have dinner, and we left. I missed Chief Botary's retirement party there because I was away with my grandchildren in Florida on a short vacation. So when you were saying East Bay Club, I was totally lost. I didn't have no idea what you're talking about.
I thought there was an East Bay Club, maybe, in Plymouth that I don't know about. So East Bay's not... It's not a political place.
Alan Costello.
Well, for obvious reasons, I haven't been invited. But I have not heard of it, in all fairness. I wouldn't be surprised. I think more now than ever before, people are paying attention. And there could be a very informal group that gets together. But I'm going to... I usually have a fairly good idea, or I hear something in the wind. I haven't heard word one about such a group. And maybe if, you know, looking for members, you know, they can call me up. Thank you.
John Mahoney.
Ed, I'm not happy with Botary. He didn't invite me to that party. Charlie.
I've had four or five of them.
Okay. How many did you have?
I haven't had any yet.
Okay, all right. Are we getting invited?
Yes, yeah.
Okay. Charlie Matheson. So I think what you're referring to is kind of one of the oldest things in the book in America. It happens in any club or restaurant in any community. You know, you have groups of people getting together and talking to each other, and hey, each other, and hey, you know, what's going on in the next race, and who can we run, and, you know, or should we support this person? So, I mean, these conversations have had... Are had all over the community, and they're probably in residential settings and in restaurants, bar settings, and, you know, if anything happened over there, certainly wasn't setting precedent.
Any follow-up to any of that?
No. Now that that's taken care of, I'm happy to move on.
Okay. Thank you. This is a question our... One of our Plymouth reporters, of course, Bobby Clark, sent me. And she said, "Do you think economic development, to the extent often proposed by candidates to lower the tax rate, is even possible, given Plymouth is not Boston and is not near 128, as the town's planning director recently pointed out to the select board? If so, explain." Let's start with John Mahoney.
Mathematically impossible. I had a former colleague, eight years ago, asked, "What is the math involved with diversifying the quote-unquote tax base?" And at the time, Rep. Muratori was the chair, and finance director came in a couple of weeks later and gave a presentation. You have two variables. It's a residential variable, and then the... I'm sorry, and then the other three quote-unquote positive variables are industrial, commercial, and personal property. Okay? Worst thing that ever happened to any community south of the city in the last 400 years is that plan showing up. The entire thing was an illusion. And I had somebody say the... Tell me the other day it was essentially a Ponzi scheme. You're at 85% residential. You're basically... You have another $2 to $5 billion of residential development in the queue in the next 20 years, and if you don't get your water supply out ahead of that, you're in trouble. So, I disagree with the whole fiscal notion that you take all new growth that goes into the general fund. It doesn't work.
Okay. What about you, Alan Costello? What do you think, economic development? We hear this in every town and every race. Do you think it's even possible in Plymouth?
Well, I do have hope for it. And I was sitting in this same forum three years ago. Same question was posed, and the percentages, unfortunately, today are the same as they were back in 2019. 10% to 14%, depending on who you speak to. I was a little disappointed with the planning director when he made that location, location, location speech, because I think that we're missing out. We do have major highway, Route 3. We also have a major highway. It's not quite 495 where it touches Plymouth, but 25. It's very quick access to 495 and 195. It's a section of town that's very... Little use down there. There's some problems with some titles, but I think going forward, if we're going to get out of this commercial development slump, we've got to look towards that parcel. But I'm not as thinking about it as darkly as Mr. Mahoney. I think there is some hope. Thank you.
Same question, Ed Bradley. What do you think, economic development in Plymouth?
I don't think it's going to lower anybody's taxes, but it's going to help us shift the tax burden from, you know, a little bit from the residential, you know, to the commercial. And it's not going to be as big of a change as, like you said, in one of the cities, but we do have some areas, especially that, you know, we could excel in and attract business, especially with the marine component being, you know, being a really good port. But we should not try. I don't want to say that it can't happen, so we're not going to try. We have to try everything we possibly can.
Okay. Same question, Charlie Blitzer, economic development.
We have a lot of existing commercial space that's empty right now. If we can fill that, and if we can identify the existing areas that are desirable for developers that want a commercially light industrial development, we get that zone properly, we can attract the businesses. We have to work with the Economic Development Foundation, and I believe we can do it. Are we going to get it up to 30%? No, but we could at least try to get it, you know, up a little bit to help sustain the residential taxes.
Okay. I want to go to the lightning round now. These are the questions that we ask, where the answers are either yes or no, or one or two sentences tops. And remember, the word is lightning, fast, quick like a bunny. So let's start now with Kevin Tocchi. Lightning round question for our candidates.
The other topic we didn't get to, a town of Plymouth form of government. Keep it the same or change it? If you want to change it, what would you like to change it to?
Two sentences.
Yes.
Let's start with Alan Costello.
I hope that council with a town administrator or town manager.
Okay. Ed Bradley, same question.
Yes, I want to change. Towne is too slow, but I'm not in favor of the mayor.
Okay. Charlie Blitzer, same question.
Town manager council, I agree, it's... This form of government's too slow, and we need full-time government.
Okay. Same question, John Mahoney.
Kevin, nobody's given me one concrete example of how our finances improve with a change of government. Keep it the same.
Okay. Charles Mathewson.
This is a tough question. Again, John, what's your favorite pond in Plymouth?
You know, one of the best acquisitions the community has made this year was Hedges Pond down, I think, in Oak...
Lightning.
I'm sorry.
Quick lightning.
Hedges.
Okay, there you go. Alan.
West Pond.
Okay. Ed.
Long Pond.
Okay. Charlie?
White Pond.
Okay. Question I ask every forum. Plymouth County Government, stay or go?
Go.
John Mahoney.
Go.
Okay.
Go.
Alan Costello, go?
Go.
Ed Bradley, go? Charlie?
No, I'm abstaining from that. I have no answer. I'm not sure.
Okay. Let's go back now to Mr. Tocchi.
Do town officials effectively communicate with the residents?
Yes or no?
Yes or no?
Let's start in this end.
What was the question?
Do town officials effectively communicate with the residents? Yes or no?
Tell you what, I've only been on eight months.
Yes or no?
Yes or no?
Yeah. I do.
Okay. Ed?
No.
Some.
Okay. John?
Improvements to be made on Facebook.
Nobody can do this, honestly. Charlie, yeah, quick lightning round question.
Related question. What's your favorite piece of seashore in town? Charlie?
Piece of seashore? White House Beach.
Crystal Beach. Alan?
Yacht Club.
Okay.
Long Beach.
Okay. And just because I asked this in the last forum, and people never want to admit what they're watching on TV, would you say you have watched less than five minutes of Johnny Depp and Amber Heard, or more than five minutes of Johnny Depp and Amber Heard?
Zero.
Okay.
Less.
Less?
None.
Charlie?
Less.
Okay. Imagine, it's on TV all the time. It's amazing to me. Okay.
I don't even know what you're talking about.
Johnny Depp and Amber Heard, all this crazy stuff. It's on all the networks. I don't know. I don't even know why it's on the news. But anyway, we're going to go to our closing statements now. We're going to reverse the order that we started in. You've been listening to a forum here for the Plymouth Select Board, two seats for candidates. So we're going to reverse the order, and now we're going to begin with Charlie Blitzer. And remember, your closing statements are one minute.
Thank you very much. I fell in love with this town when my family started spending summers on White House Beach when I was six years old. It was the friends and memories I made during those summers that led my wife Lisa and I to move to Plymouth permanently and raise our wonderful family here. This community is one that I love and one that I want to help position for success, not only in the short term, but for the benefit of my children and their children. I have seen Plymouth change over the decades I have spent here, and I have no doubt that our town will continue to grow. We must embrace our new neighbors, encourage new businesses, and make proactive decisions to guide our present and protect our future. If re-elected, I will continue to represent the people, not as a polished politician, but as a neighbor, father, and friend. Please vote for me, Charlie Blitzer, on Saturday, May 21st.
Thank you. That was Charlie Blitzer. Let's go now to Ed Bradley, your closing statement.
Sure, I want to thank everyone here asking questions, and everyone listening at home and watching. You know, I believe the basic mission of local government is protection of its residents. I have a 47-plus-year history as a public servant, protecting the town and the people and their property. And if elected, I plan to continue my service to the residents, but in a different capacity, but with the same enthusiasm and energy that I've done over the years. My family and I love the Town of Plymouth. My immediate family, my brothers, sisters, their spouses, all live and work in the Town of Plymouth. My two sons and daughter-in-laws live and work in the Town of Plymouth. I have eight beautiful grandchildren, all born and living here in Plymouth. My family and I are vested in this town. I only want what's best for the town and its residents.
Thank you. Again, that's Ed Bradley, final statement. Let's go now to John Mahoney, closing statement.
I want to thank WATD for hosting this forum. Never a dull moment, again. So, and my three colleagues to my right, with respect to this race, and I'm hoping in the next few days, you guys, maybe we can text each other and figure out where everyone's going to be on election night. So, I just want to just reiterate, as we get into Saturday, there's five days to go. There's four people running for two seats. My name is John Mahoney. It was an honor for me to serve on this board for 12 years in the past. I think I bring a certain level of experience and veteran presence, and I can certainly hit the ground running from day one. So this Saturday, you have two votes, and I'm asking you for one of your two votes on Saturday. So, thank you.
Thank you. You've been listening to the four candidates running for Plymouth Select Board, John Mahoney, Alan Costello, Ed Bradley, Charlie Blitzer. And of course, thank you to our media partners at PAC TV for joining us with this. This will be up online with WATD. Probably tomorrow morning, you'll hear selected cuts during our morning drive news too, about what has happened. And we will, of course, be following this race. I'm sorry, I didn't...
That's all right. I'll be quick.
Okay, I'm sorry. I don't know how I skipped you.
That's okay. That's okay. I want to thank WATD. I want to thank PAC TV. I want to thank the three other candidates. I want to reach out to the voter, to the resident. It's a very important election, May 21st. There's a host of things going on. There's four ballot questions, as was alluded to tonight. There's three that speak to the government, former government that we may have. There's one to the Hotch Track racing facility. There's due to redistricting, there's three new precincts. There's 162 town meeting members, all up for election the same day. There's a contested select board, school committee, and planning board race. So, there's two positions for select board. I would like to ask for your support. I'm going to guarantee you that if you want change, that please pick Alan Costello with one of your votes, and I'll work very hard for the town. I look forward to hit the ground running on Tuesday night, if I'm fortunate enough to be voted in. But thank you very much.
Thank you very much, and thank you for being so gracious. I didn't mean to step over you. And again, you can always check out the results on our website, 959watd.com. I want to thank Larry Nelson, our engineer, Lenny Rowe, who did the timing on this too. Tell people, get out there and vote on Saturday. If you don't vote, you don't have a voice. I'm Christine James, 959WATD.